The duly warned meeting, regular meeting of Newport City Council for October 20th at 6:00 PM, starting at 6:00 PM. Present, we have Council members Andrew Touche, John Manette, Kevin Charbonneau, Clerk-Treasurer Jim Johnson. I just got a text that Carter is getting situated in a hotel and will be here shortly. So I expect her before we go too far. I don't think we have any city staff in the room tonight. Carrie's in the back. What's up, Carrie? Other than, I keep doing that to Carrie because she sits and hides in the back. Carrie Schultz, our financial and office administrators with us. Thank you, John, for knowing that. So, second item on the agenda is additions and deletions. I'm just going to ask each of you. Andrew, any additions or deletions?
No, thank you.
Okay, John?
No, thanks.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Jim?
No.
Okay. Hearing none. I do not have any additions or deletions for the agenda of the night either. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's a lot in it. It has two sets of minutes from the 6th and the 8th of October. And Jim, we don't say thank you enough, but we go week after week and pass these things because I can't remember the last time we found something we wanted to correct in it. So thank you for your effort of doing that. We have AP warrants for the 8th, the 9th, the 17th, and again on the 17th. Four sets of AP warrants. We have one payroll warrant for the 14th of October. And Jim, the best of my knowledge, we don't have any requests for liquor license, vendor permits, or special events. So those are the items before you in the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item, oh please, the numbering starts over. Item number one on the printed agenda is the update on the new, the effort that is coming together in the community on the Joshua, what's now being called the Joshua House Warming Shelter. And I've asked Brenda Lauthner and Tim Daly to be here tonight to speak to that. Brenda, do you want to speak to it?
Okay, I could start with the fact that most of you may not know about Joshua House. But we've been in this, well, it's been there for many years, but we took it over, this present board, in 2019. And in that time, we've helped over 1,000 families and spent somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000 helping keep people sheltered. That includes all kinds of things, like keeping them warm, heating oil. And when we got involved with the thoughts of a warming shelter, I knew that it was a need because I take the calls. I'm the volunteer, the care coordinator. So I take the calls and I, and we work on trying to help as much as we can. And it's really about preventing homelessness. But there are times when there are emergencies and people are cold. It's in the winter and we just haven't had a place for them to go. So that's why I've always wanted this and we're very thankful. Joshua House is going to be putting, Tim could speak to it more than I, the $15,000. And that is a loan. Then we're fundraising for the rest of the money. So, Tim?
Oh, all right. Tim, Tim Daly. And so, yes, so Joshua House, she was talking about the $150,000 to $200,000 that we've helped with people in the Northeast Kingdom communities. And all of that money has come from fundraising. It's not really ever come from any principality. You know, it's not to say that we hadn't thought about doing that, but we just don't have enough volunteers or the right people to kind of get the signatures to make that all happen. So all, so Joshua House has helped with community support always. And this project of the Warming Shelter is that as well. It's, Joshua House is the nonprofit 501(c)(3). And so people can, of course, make donations through us and we will be paying the bills. And that, I guess, is pretty much it. You know, it's what we're doing, what Joshua House is doing. So as, people have donated to Joshua House to help with needs, finding rents, paying electric bills, that kind of stuff. And that's basically why they were donating in the first place. And so as kind of the guardian of the money, in a sense, I feel responsible for how that money is used. And so we're, in a sense, loaning it to the Warming Shelter. It's $15,000 that we're putting up, loaning it to the Warming Shelter. While in the meantime, I'm out asking people for money, giving donations. If I don't already have your addresses, I will find them. And so it's, it's coming along. And just pretty much right at this moment, I was just talking to someone, as you know, I work at the Thai restaurant, and one of the, one of the customers, I was talking with him, and he may make a donation upwards of $5,000. We have someone that sent us $1,000. So even going into it, we're already climbing. And so the money for this, that's where it's coming from. And, but one of the things, in keeping with the essence of Joshua House, we want to make it, we want to be the Warming Shelter. But we also have a winter coming. And so what we're going to do is we're going to raise enough money to get the Warming Shelter built. That's, I'm optimistic about that. There are other things planned. There's a benefit plan and whatnot. But then we will take back our $15,000 so that Brenda can help people through this winter with their needs, getting sheltered, and the things, the work that she does. And at the end of June, she will stop doing Joshua House as it's been done. And the focus will then be on the Warming Shelter moving forward. The needs of people are always going to be there. Joshua House has been a great support over these many years, but now that will sort of be out of the mix and people will go to churches and to other people for assistance. But the Warming Shelter is really something the community needs. I had a friend, I'll tell you who she was. She wasn't, she was a person that was a bit crazy. Corinne Ross. I don't know if any of you remember who she was. She was our local, one of our local street people. Pushed around a shopping cart and she'd maybe harass you or she'd talk to you and just all sorts of things. But she was moved about, she ended up at Scenic View in Westfield. She was a person who had always been in Newport. She really needed to be in Newport, but there she was. She had walked there from, he walked here from there a couple times. She got lost one time. She went through the woods, took her 24 hours and ended up at the, at Martha's Diner. Anyway, and she was difficult, but she had locked herself out one night last December. And the neighbors didn't probably respond to her because, again, she was always kind of yelling for something. Anyway, she went around to the back to try to climb over the balcony. She had done it once before, but successfully, but not without injury. But this time, she didn't make it. She fell back and basically froze to death. And if she had been living in Newport and had locked herself out and there was a Warming Shelter, she could have gone there. I just don't want that to happen to anyone else. And, you know, and people, there are a lot of reasons to have a Warming Shelter. And I'm not really here to push that, but I believe that the money of Joshua House is well-spent in going toward the Warming Shelter, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
So just for context, Council members, I'll remind you that basically this is an initiative too that's kind of grown out of the task force that Kevin and Travis have been leading this summer. The first initiative was the ordinance that we worked on in past the last meeting. The goal here is a short-term solution for the winter where volunteers in the community with the fiscal sponsorship of Joshua House would step up to make sure that people have a place to stay. It may not be open every night, but it would be available to be opened every night if someone needs it. So there's a lot of detail still to be worked out about how that will all work exactly, but there's a group of people who are working hard, meeting weekly, and working on the detail on all of this, trying to make it work. And it will not be, we do not envision this as a city, an effort led by the city. We envision this really as a community-wide effort. There are a lot of local religious leaders and lay leaders in the religious community at the table, in addition to Joshua House. A lot of the folks in the social service community. NECA has volunteered to do background checks and do trainings for volunteers who will work at this. So everybody's kind of putting what they can on the table. So in a perfect world, if everything goes exactly the way we hope it will, the plan is to try and get something open by roughly Thanksgiving, so roughly the end of November. And then maintain it through the month of April next year. Any questions about that? Comments?
Have you identified a location?
We're having conversation about a location. The old Bayview Motel, which for 20 years was called Richard's Hunting Lodge up on, at 501 Pleasant Street, is a property that I bought together with three other partners through an LLC called Ragamuffin Builders. And we have a hope that we can work it out there, though there are some hurdles that need to be overcome in terms of the challenges around regulation. So I'm not prepared to say that's a done deal at this point, but a lot of people are working actively to try and figure out how to make it happen. And I suspect we'll know whether or not it's going to work in the next week to 10 days. And then if it will, there's going to be a lot of volunteer effort needed to try and convert the old restaurant in that building to make it habitable and dignified for folks who need a place to stay at night. Any other questions? Brenda, anything else you want to add?
No, I just know that this need is not going to go away. And just a few days ago, at my church, which is a dirty community church, we had someone laying on our handicap ramp when we got to the men's breakfast when Frank got there. And it's just, this has happened, you know, several times before. We just really need a spot, yes, a warm spot.
Thank you. Brenda and Tim, thank you for coming tonight. And there are a number of you in the room who have been a part of trying to get this conversation rolling. And I just want to note, because I think it's important to recognize, this is not the first time this has been attempted. And there are a lot of people who have been trying to care for folks who are at risk in this community for a very long time. It just feels like right now, the timing might be right for all the kind of different places of momentum to come together and try again. So thank you to everybody who's been working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I promised Tim he could go to work by 6:15, so. Thank you, Brenda. Okay, I note that Carter has joined us. Carter, can you, yeah, wait, okay. Carter is here and able to hear us, so she's a part of quorum from here on out. The next item we have on the agenda is to hear from our financial consultant, Chip Sterns, to walk us through our financials. And Chip, since Carter's not in the room with me tonight, I'm really hoping you can share your screen. Is that possible? Oh, we can't hear you. Why is that? Can I hear you, Carter? What happens if you speak?
Testing audio from Carter.
So the audio's not on our, not on our end. Say something out loud, Chip.
He's unmuted.
Oh, Chip, you're muted. That's what's going on. There it is.
That's what's going on. I'm muted.
Okay. Rookie mistake.
Yeah. Okay, so for those of you who are interested, first I want to announce, if it hasn't been already, the audit is complete. We've done our final draft, our SIS 114 and 115 letters. And the plan is for the auditors to present to the council, I think, a near future meeting.
Can we just pause right there? That's just a really big deal, y'all. So the audit is done as of October 20th. We have all the final paperwork in our hands. So stay tuned. We'll be, we'll be coming back and asking them, the auditors, to report back to the council sometime soon.
And we will provide what has been provided to us through the Subsic Savings Bank at their request. So I have on my screen sharing with you a series of financial reports that were in your packet. And I'm going to attempt to see if I can make these things larger for you.
Yeah, Carter, what can I do on my end to help with that? Can you do it?
Because I can monitor and carry it around.
Come, Carrie, help us, please. Never mind, Carter, Carrie's going to save us.
All right.
Hold on just a second. Hold on.
First thing I wanted to show you is where we are at. This is as of Friday, 8:50 AM, with our inter-fund balances. A reminder, the inter-fund balances are the disposition of cash between the general fund and all other funds. It does not represent how much money is in the checkbook. It only represents money owed between funds. And again, when we started back in May, when I first came on board, that top number was over $2 million that was owed to the general fund. Now it is down to $803,000, which, as you can see, is primarily owed by the sewer fund and the general fund. Thus the reasoning behind the article and vote on August 12th for the sewer to borrow up to a million bucks. That number I have targeted to be $875,000 based upon the due-to-do from of $873,000 at fiscal year-end 2025. So we are still making progress. This sheet will look much different when it is more reflective of the general fund, even with or even holding a little cash primarily for water and sewer, which it has not done for years. I'll switch to the balance sheets. And again, blow them up a little bit.
That's better.
A little too much. And I want to go all the way to the beginning. Is already been looking at this today? So in cash, as of 9:00 AM Friday, $1,275,000 is in the bank, which is a good thing. Then when I get a little lower, you'll see we owe the bank $1,800,000. Other points of interest. Taxes have been billed. First tax due date, November 15. And our current tax receivable is $10,270,000. This includes all the amounts owed to the city and for education. In this same group, the allowance for uncollectible at the bottom, which shows $545,000 as an offset, that is equal to the total amount of taxes uncollected June 30th, 2025, which is a large amount of delinquency. And the auditors pointed that out and wanted to know what's being done about it. And so that is part of the financial task force and the delinquent tax collector and the city attorney to work through. Scrolling down through. There it is. The bottom of the total assets, due-to-do from other funds, the $803,000. Again, we have more than that in the bank account. And so when you see the inter-fund balances, that is a reflection of how much money could be in the checkbook if everybody owed the general fund money. The next line down, the tax anticipation line of credit note. This was the one that was authorized up to $2.8 million. And we're at $1.8 million. And again, that is primarily because lots of our forecasting for cash activity, we actually have not done. So we are ahead of schedule of where we anticipated being with our cash flow to get our original tax anticipation note amount. The rest of that is auditor-adjusted entries that sit on the balance sheet for the rest of the year. The approved payroll, vacation, comp type, sick type, they just sit there all year long as an adjustment made once a year at the end of the year. Series of liabilities for the reserves. And the big ticket item in the middle there is Newport City School District. This is the total amount of the $10,270,000. $530,000 is right now what the preliminary cash flow says the city shall be paying to the schools. This is intentionally an offset of a liability to the $10 million so that it does not look as if the city is so flushed with cash to falsely state our revenue is $10 million on a receivable. Our revenue actually is only that which we are going to collect in theory for the city. Last time we met, the current year fund balance was a negative number. It is now $3,954,000 to the good. And that is primarily because we produced our tax bills. That doesn't mean we collected the money. It just means we booked the revenue in the receivable. Anyone have any questions on the general fund balance sheet?
Chip, I have a question, which I think is probably supposed to be evident to me and I'm just not catching it. So of that fund balance of $3.954 million, can you, that's primarily the tax money that we billed. I think the number you showed, showed us somewhere above shows us how much we've actually collected on that so far. Is that right?
No. Nowhere on there is an amount that we've collected thus far. That would come out of tax administration. So while we have, I'm going to roll back to the top.
Thank you.
We have yet to collect $10,270,000. That includes education. And of that amount, as of now, we have to pay the school just over half of it. So as long as it's a receivable and the half of it or more to the school, if we collect it, we then pay that liability now.
Got it.
So what occurs is that one-half of that liability will be paid to the three different schools after November 15th in our first collection period, which, if all goes smoothly, then our receivable will be half of what it is and this liability will be half of what we owe the school.
Thank you. That's what I was misunderstanding. Are there other questions before Chip goes on? Okay, go ahead, Chip.
It's okay. We'll go through the quick ones. Moring management. We're still behind by $2,843 in terms of revenue to get that back to a zero balance. I'm assuming when the ice fills in, the moring fees are going to go away. Project fund. This was a fund run for years. In 2010, it had $17 in it. We voted to close this fund down into the general fund, take them to $17. East Main Street Cemetery, private purpose, as described several times. This fund is not raising enough money to pay the cost to mow the grass. So the general fund is writing checks and thus far, this particular cemetery fund owes the general fund $23,000 that is accumulated as debt to the general fund over the course of three to five years. So consequently, my budgeting next year is my opinion, you should budget to mow the cemeteries as the general government expects. At some point, the general government may have to give the cemetery fund $23,000 just as a transfer, not in cash, so that the inter-fund account balance will be zeroed out. Future discussion. RLS Niles Fund, again, a trust fund held by the city. And right now, I guess we were to check for $60 for some admin fee, I would guess, and we haven't gotten that back from this trust fund. Normally, this is a due-to-do from that is zero. CDPG Funds. This is another fund that held money from old community development block grants from, I think, 2008, 2009. And during one of the last couple meetings, we transferred out the residual balances of those cash accounts back to the general fund. Public Safety Funds. These are restricted by federal government activities under the control of the police chief for activities that the police department is allowed to spend money on as long as it's not supplanting regular agitators. Recreation Trust. This is the REC committee's fundraising efforts and activities that they would spend money on. During one of our last couple meetings, we cleared many of the activities that had already been done, the REC committee wanted, but then cash never got reimbursed into the general fund and paid the bills. So now we are down to the trust fund a little bit, a big group project with Jen Graham in it. And some bills got paid out of the general fund that have yet to be reimbursed from the REC committee for the $1,023686. I understand Carter to be involved in the REC committee. And I sent Carter probably 10 years' worth of the financials all around the REC committee for the REC committee to be able to look through and come up with questions they may have.
That would explain Carter's glazed number look.
And then the big ones. Sewer. Sewer receivables. And you can see again, the bottom line of the sewer assets says, I owe $799,875,400 to somebody, and that is the general fund. This fund is meant to be self-sustaining. If it's not, this is where the 10-year note that we're hoping to get, a meeting in November, for $875,000, would clearly place this fund as having money in the general fund checkbook. But that's going to be offset in the liability group below. There will be a new line for the deficit borrowing for a 10-year note. And we will see that liability come in here for the $875,000 once we borrow it. Again, we're shifting it from a due-to-do from owed to the general fund to a liability owed to the Subsic Savings Bank. And that will help the overall cash flow in general government. Right now, the sewer fund balance for the current year, which is showing the $182,000. That represents actual revenues against actual expenditures year-to-date. And because it's an enterprise fund, it books on a accrual basis, so 100% of our billing that went out is treated as revenue. And if I go back to the receivable at the top, it's about $173,000. So though it looks like we're flush... So though it looks like we're flush, not everybody is paid. And there is well quite a list of delinquencies in sewer and matched with water that the auditors want the city to pursue collection on. And the water fund. I think this may be the first time ever reported the due-to-from is a positive number of $23,000. Meaning, the general fund checkbook's holding 23 grand of water money. This is all subject to change because we are still paying bills on the water tower project. And we just converted the third liability down here, which is right here. That's the note that we converted from a construction line of credit into the bond anticipation note for up to $2.827 billion. And we will continue to draw on that bond anticipation note for the project of finishing the East Side Water Tower and for purchasing and installing water meters as rapidly as we can. Several times, I have said that the water fund seemed to owe the general fund between $200,000 and $300,000. And it has been discovered that it's, does not owe $300,000. There was an interpretation of, between the grants and the charge locations, the water tower fund had some items charged to general engineering. But that was within the water fund and not within the general fund. And so, because I kept hearing general engineering, I was presuming it was the general fund. And working it out with Frank, it wasn't the general fund. It was actually general engineering in the water fund. So there is no obligation to transfer any value, even if it's borrowed, back to the general fund for past aggressions of bill paying. That simply did not happen that way.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions about that? Because that's different than what Chip had been kind of foreshadowing. The expectation had been that there had been expenses incurred by the general fund that were not reimbursed by the water fund. And therefore, we would be able to draw against those funds that, you know, the loan that we had arranged and reimburse the general fund several hundred thousand dollars. And we hadn't ever gotten specific at this point about how much it would be. And Chip and Frank Carey have been sleuthing this and have basically determined that that's simply not the case.
In other words, they were paid through water fund accounts.
They were paid appropriately through the water fund, which is, which is good news for the water fund. And I suppose if we wanted the 200 grand for the general fund, not so good news. But it also means that at the end of the process, there's gonna be more money left in that water fund note to help us with the cost of water meter installation. Because less of it will have to come to pay back the obligation to the general fund. Did I misspeak about any of that, Chip?
Here's the dot.
All right, I got it. It took me a while to get it on.
So it went from 500,000 to a little over 900,000 left to pay out on our bond anticipation note that we can draw to and then convert that to an actual municipal bond bank 25-year note.
Okay, go on.
Great.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Just to make sure. So we're still going to go after the full amount from the bond bank.
Yes, the intention is still to go after $2.827 million from the bond bank, which would then satisfy the loan that we've taken short-term from Pussumsek. Okay? And anything that is there beyond the actual cost of the water tower installation and the reservoir cover is money that we'll be able to dedicate to finishing the water meter project. Okay? Anybody else? Go ahead, Chip.
Okay, current year fund balance for water. $273,000 in the red. And it has the same billing cycle as sewer, but water still has the water tower project expenditures being paid out. And unfortunately for us, until we draw on that bond anticipation, we're still gonna run ourselves in a deficit mode here. This has been talked about along with additional debts for sewer for the sewer and water task force to address rate increases again for the last two quarters of this fiscal year. Otherwise, both of these funds, I think, are still gonna come up short in terms of revenues to expenditures with all the activity that is planned and all the debts to be paid. That's the end of our balance sheets.
Any questions before we move on to actuals to budget?
So regarding water, one of the components that we're looking at in terms of a rate adjustment is the due-to-from line. But we were basing all of our calculations on the figure that appears in the audit report, the June 30, 2025 figure, which I think is 30-some thousand, if I'm going from memory.
Yes.
And we were, the water sewer committee is working on the premise that it's that $30,000 figure as of June 30th that needs to be factored into a rate adjustment for the last two quarters of the current fiscal year. We just need you to tell us if we're wrong in that regard or if we're on the right track.
You are not wrong to try to raise revenue to cover a prior deficit owed to the general fund. That is not a wrong thing to do. Like I said, in the end, the reason we are $23,000 to the good in the due-to-from right now is because of billing and collection that has exceeded the $30,000 that we started the year in the red.
So it's just, so that's just a timing issue. And what we really need to do is clear that $30,000.
Yes. Ideally, we want to end the year in which water and sewer are in a position where the general fund owes them cash. And it's normal. That would be the best-case scenario is for cash flow. We don't have to keep hiking money, if you will, between bank accounts to meet our obligations, which was the big step we took in June to pay off the $1.8 billion tax anticipation note. Right?
Yep.
And again, those two funds combined owe $1.9 million to the general fund.
Right. Okay, so it sounds like our thinking is correct then.
I think that's right. Which is to say, council members, that we're gonna ask for a special meeting a week from tonight. And water and sewer is hopefully gonna be coming to us. That's right, yeah, the 27th. Water is gonna be coming to us with a recommendation for another rate adjustment to make sure that we are gonna be run solidly in the black in the water and sewer funds this year. Okay. All right.
That is our goal.
Should we go on to the budget to actuals?
Yes. Chip, let's go on. Again, looking at budget to actuals.
Chip, can you make that bigger like you did before, please? That's better. Thank you.
Okay. So we're looking at budget to actuals, but this is suppressed to headers, meaning we are not gonna look at every line item detail. We're looking at subtotaling only. So we get a general overview of where we stand. And you'll notice in the first line, for taxes, we haven't met our obligation and we book on an accrual basis. And in the details, you would spot the pilot payments, the whole harmless payments, the hospital payment. None of those have been collected, which is why we are not at 100% of taxes. There are many line items related to taxes for which we don't actually get paid them until closer to the end of the fiscal year. Another obvious highlight with explanation. This one here. $32,000 budgeted for fire department income and we're at $888,000. Just a reminder, we borrowed $868,000 to buy a fire truck. And in terms of accounting, we have to call that income and we have to book it as an expense, even though it is really a lease. And that's why that line looks askew and out of place. The auditors at year-end would book that entry, so I've already booked it. And nothing else is really outstanding relative to the, to the general government revenue stream. Recreation Department, when you're looking at its totals, $287,000 against $529,000. And that's because all of these categories are together to make that total. And the odd thing about recreation, we're very busy. April, May, June. And then we end the fiscal year, we start July, August, September, and we end October and things slow down. So that is why, if you look at these numbers, they will remain likely lengthless for another three or four months unless there's a, you know, wild ski program going on and we pass a lot of cash through. The revenue transfer with no budget, this line here. That is where we moved the $17,000, the $13,000, the $31,000. A couple meetings ago, we closed out excess cash in other funds and brought it into the general fund. There was no anticipation for that $45,000 to come in, but we brought it in and that was done by action of the city council. So from one standpoint, if everything worked perfectly, you should end the year with a $45,000 surplus. Cautiously, I tell you, don't think about it that way because that ain't what's gonna happen. Now we're into the expenditures. Now we're in operations. Again, nothing radically stands out of place here. The odd ball that I will point out, that I'm well aware of because of some efforts I put in this afternoon. City manager, although you don't have one, you are showing expenditures because during some research I was doing today to answer a question for Rick, that is where all of my time is booked, is under city manager salary. And not much else in that group for government operations. In public safety, the police department. There's two lines at the top and three lines at the second page. Nothing radically out of place there. However, we do not budget for contract services. But we do get revenue in for police services provided to others. Typically, this is billed through the miscellaneous accounts receivable and collected. And there is on the balance sheet a miscellaneous receivable right now of $108,000 made up of many building activities. I'm sure some of them relate to police. Into the next public safety group, fire department. Nothing radically out of place here. We have fire equipment that has been purchased. And I think a lot of that has to do with maintenance of the cascaded unit, which is bringing up grounds. Next major group. Public Works. These are all of the categories for which we track activity for public works. So the department equivalency is 50. And then there's a whole series of groups, 50 through 62, that are involved. Nothing is radically out of place. But when we get to renumbering the chart of accounts, there's a whole question of whether or not we want to maintain this level. Because within each one of these areas, there are salary lines, there are supply lines, there are maintenance lines. And this could all be reduced down to a group which is salaries and benefits, operations, builder maintenance, and street maintenance, which would make budgeting much more simplified. Primarily because I can't tell you today, if I was budgeting for next year, what my winter maintenance budget should be because I don't know what the weather's pointing to. And if we have 50-degree days all winter long and no snow, then my winter maintenance budget is gonna look like out of place. I don't have any plowing salaries. I don't, what are any costs? So we may be doing other projects. And with the concept of priority budgeting, this million-and-a-half-dollar department could prioritize and change the priorities all year long, knowing that they have, you know, 15 people at 2,080 hours, at so much per hour with 400 hours of overtime for each, in a straight-line budget, as opposed to trying to project how much money's gonna be spent in all of these nine areas that you see. Again, nothing stands out, but that's a very complicated process to try to target in a budget process to name the salaries and costs in each one of these areas a year from now. Big landscaper. Perfect, 30% through the year, 30% of budget. REC department has the same type of condition that the DBW does. They have all of these broken-out areas of cost centers. And when we went through the revenue, there are the same number of revenue sources. And several things were noted in the detail that we have salary lines with budgets and we have no actuals. And then we have other lines with actuals that are salaries but no budget. So this has grown over the years and right now just needs some management and cleanup. The balance of the groups. Again, nothing really stands out here. Other than every number scheme that I've completed and is being looked at on the task force, these two standalone accounts, I have combined into this group of conservation and development because that had salaries but didn't have any work in school or unemployment. And so that's my guess as to where those would go. Again, nothing major. Debt service, $295 budgeted, 101 spent. But I also know that within this 101 spent, there are several debts that were paid that did not have a budget. And so between Kerry and Rick and I, tried to start to accumulate in one spreadsheet all of the debts for all of the funds so that when next year's budget is put together, we actually have a handle on what we owe to whom or what. This particular fund, again, is gaining additional debt as soon as we take out the new... new deficit loan for ten years, which we were authorized to go up to one-point-eight-million dollars. I've targeted that to be one-point-three-million dollars, which is rounded up. The one-point-two-nine-million dollars of state tax adjustments on bills that by budgeting was incorrect budgeting. And that's what it adds up to from twenty-eighteen through twenty-twenty-five. If you added all the numbers that were budgeted, it comes up to one-point-two-nine-million dollars. And again, the bottom line of our debt service and miscellaneous, we get into our capital creepments, budgeted. Seven-ninety-seven and spent a million already. Buried in that million is eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-dollar fire truck. That was not budgeted. And again, by audit standards, we have to show it, so we are showing it now. And again, as pointed out, in the general fund, our revenue budget does not equal our expense budget. We have budgeted one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty dollars and forty-eight cents more in expenditures than we did in revenue. Against a seven-million-dollar budget, being a thousand bucks off is not a heartbreak. But best practice is to budget revenues to match expenditures. And I've already pointed out areas where we have expenditures with no budget and we have to pay them. So right now, this number that you saw on the balance sheet is during your fund balance. Literally comes from actual revenues minus actual expenditures. And because we booked on an accrual basis, we look like three-point-nine-million dollars of surplus currently. And that's because we haven't finished paying our bills for the year. Any questions on general fund? Included in your packet may have been the same report with full detail in which it would have been probably sixty pages long. And so if you have questions about any of these subtotal areas, you can look at the full detail budget status report that I hope is provided to you.
Any questions for Chip? Council members? Pretty thorough.
One found a ten.
Any questions for anybody in the community for Chip? Jennifer Bierling, go ahead.
While I understand that from a standpoint of budgeting, it will be more simplistic if you have these broad categories rather than individual line items. And that within those categories, given that they're not gonna be identified line item by line item, that you can move things around as you need them. But the part from a taxpayer's standpoint that's concerning is we don't have any idea what's going on in those big, huge categories. And when you migrate from light item budgeting and expenditures down to these broad categories, we're losing a significant amount of transparency. And so I would like to know how we can regain that transparency to make sure that our tax dollars are being properly expended and not being squandered and not being used to target pet projects of certain officials at certain points in time.
Chip, you wanna try and respond to that? And then if-
I don't want you to confuse the report we're looking at now as being the budget mechanism. Because the actual detail, which is thirty-five pages long, let me jump all the way back to the general fund and blow it up. This is the detailed line. And what I was showing council over here for taxation is just this line. But in detail, it's all these lines added up.
So will the taxpayers have access to the detailed reports?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and, and the concept though of renumbering the chart of accounts for simplification. The same concept of having subtotals be presented to council instead of the lines of detail. They still have the backup of the lines of detail. So if you wanted to see specifically what in there, I mean, this is the big one, payment and leave taxes. Six-hundred thousand and nothing collected yet. But when you're looking at what was budgeted for property taxes versus what has been billed for property taxes, yeah, we're within a thousand bucks. And that's the detail that does need to be seen. But to know where you are overall in the city, this is digestible by the city council in a reasonable amount of time.
Lori?
And, and I think, I was trying to remember, you mentioned, Chip, that there were a section of the, in the, in the budget report that you gave, there was a section of items for public works that were, that could be more general in nature because you're talking about the employees that are being spread apart. And the example that you gave was if it's, if it's not a snowy winter, then we use less plowing, but we use more in another place. So instead of, instead of moving things around all the time, we can do it more generally. But is, was that, is that correct?
Yes, effectively, if you're an employee of public works working in general government, you have a salary line, you have an overtime line, vacation, sick, personal, and that's it. And then what you're doing for work is reportable verbally or in written document by the DPW supervisor and give it to the council and says, "Here's what we did the last two weeks, here's what we plan on doing the next two weeks." Any questions? Because like I said, sitting here today, I can't tell you how much I'm gonna spend on wages in winter maintenance for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Yet tomorrow, I wanna talk to you about budgeting for twenty-six, twenty-seven and pulling a target number for winter maintenance, for summer maintenance, for street maintenance. When in fact, I know I have to pay fifteen guys two-thousand-and-eighty hours plus four-hundred hours of overtime estimated. And that is a number I can plug into a budget. And then I'm managing time instead of trying to manage budget. And you can set priorities of what you want worked on. But in terms of paying and calculating out what the cost will be, I'm not trying to split hairs. It's simple mathematics of rates of pay times number of hours to work. And who wouldn't love to be able to do that math instead of guessing how much time any single employee's gonna spend in Gartner Park?
So, the last thing I'll, I just wanna add to this is that in broad strokes, kind of from a thirty-thousand-foot view, there, there are a number of things we're really aiming for with the shifting of the cha- the chart of accounts. One is, we want to be able to see what salaries really look like. Because it's been a case of, you know, you have to look in these four places in order to try and figure out what's, what a sal- what a position is costing us, right? We're trying to figure out how to consolidate that so that people can actually see it. We're trying to make sure that we have the ability to parse the data, the, the financials in a variety of ways by using more sophisticated numbering systems that will allow us to sort in a variety of different ways, right? So we'll be able to see, okay, what did that project cost us pulling from staff time or cost from a variety of different departments? And that's just two examples, right? But there are, there are a number of them that Chip's gonna, Chip is gonna be helping us work on. But, and then of course, there's what Chip has been saying, which is that part of the goal is to then print the suppressed-to-headers version to, as, as he just did, to try and point out, are there any things that just make you wanna go deeper because we ought to be paying more attention? But the detail is always there and available through NEMRIC. And the answer to that is, it's always available to the public because that's part of what it means to do transparent financial accounting. So tomorrow, actually, Chip, is there anything else you wanna add to this and then we'll move on to the next item? Because the next item is about what happens tomorrow.
Well, like I said, I've got nine more funds to go.
We're getting there. We've come a long, long way. So thank you for all your work, Chip, and for all the folks, especially to Kerry, who's done an awful lot of work behind the scenes with Chip. Okay.
So Maury, Maury and Anethen, we've had money come in, fifteen, thirty-seven, fifty, that's the current year fund balance. We've got no expenses. Project fund, we only transferred out seventeen bucks this year. That'll never change all year long. East Main Street. This is probably mowing, twenty-nine, fifty. Happened after June thirtieth, so it's paid this year. And if twenty-nine, fifty is the number and we're up to twenty-three-thousand dollars, it's been a number of years that mowing has never been paid for. We write this check again out of the general fund checkbook. Mounds and burly, administration expense, eighty-five bucks, which is probably directly taken out of their cash accounts. And then some other expense for sixty bucks this general fund paid. That's why that due-to-no problem with sixty bucks owed to the general fund. CDBG funds, we transferred out the residual cash that was in the bank accounts. And before we did that, there was a little bit of interest that had come in during the year. Do you need to dance, Carter? Public safety, just a little bit of interest and then we transferred out the surplus that had accumulated for years in these funds over here. Because expenditures were made in general government or payroll for police items purchased out of grant funds. But the grant fund never reimbursed the general fund. So now what we're down to is what is physically left in cash in Fund Six that is police money. Recreation trust, a little bit of money in, a little bit of money out, not a whole lot of activity this year. Sewer fund. Again, suppressed-to-headers, so it's simple to see. We have billed just under thirty percent of income, which is the quarterly billing number. And we have these expenditures in the system already, which is not that high. And if you look at this, we're running a hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars to the good. But again, highlighting the budget. We budgeted a deficit of eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. So the sewer and water task force needs to come in and recommend if we're gonna change any of the expenditures to also change the anticipated budgeted revenue so that we get these to sum to zero. And if the intention is to actually raise thirty-thousand dollars more in revenue than expenditures, then this number at the bottom would say positive, thirty-thousand dollars. Why? Because we're trying to recover our debt to the general fund in this year. And that would be intentionally saying, "I'm raising more money than I need for expenditures." But again, during the discussion, we are also going to have in here additional debt on the eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar note that was not budgeted in these numbers. I think that number turned out to be a hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars annual. And then the water fund. It's a banner year in the water fund, one-quarter billed thirty-seven percent of the budgeted revenue. But when you look at the budget numbers, budgeted a surplus in the water fund of five-thousand-three-nineteen-twenty-four. However, in the water fund, there is debt service, an unbudgeted bond anticipation note, interest expense, which is basically the same as what our construction line of credit interest turned out to be. It was not budgeted, but we spent eighty-thousand-plus dollars on the construction line of credit last year. And now it's gonna be the bond anticipation, which we agreed we were gonna pay interest on a quarterly basis on the principal amount, if I'm not mistaken. And overall, general fund all the way through water, we budgeted a deficit of four-thousand bucks. But we're carrying a surplus of three-point-eight-million dollars. We can attribute that primarily to the property taxes bill, three-point-nine-million dollars in the general fund. And again, this is the suppressed-to-headers, reduced detail, thirty-thousand-dollar look, thirty-thousand-foot look, if that's what you wanna refer to it as. And again, in the renumbering scheme, water sewer is not gonna change a whole lot. However, in the detail, which I'll pop over to, I'll drop to the bottom of the water sewer. And what I wanna kind of point out, in this existing chart. Up and find where it's. This set of numbers here, this last two set of numbers are referred to as the objects. And one of the issues that we have is that objects in the present chart of accounts are not uniformly used. And in the renumbering, which has taken hours, I have expanded there to be a sub-object, another set of two digits after the object, in which this set of digits, when it's a ten, it is a salary. No matter where you are in the chart of accounts, no matter what department you're in in the chart of accounts, no matter what fund you're in in the chart of accounts. The expense object ten is a wage. It can be hourly, it can be salary, whatever. Because if I drop down here to ten, that was labeled municipal retirement, which is a payable benefit, but it's not a wage. And so even within a simple fund like this, the continuity is not holding up for this to function as it should. So I could ask the accounting system, "Provide me all object tens." And therefore, what I'm asking the financials to report to me is all the budgets and actuals for all the salaries. And you can't ask that question today in the current chart of accounts because numbers don't line up uniformly to ask that question. And it's, you know, it's not wrong, but it evolved over twenty-plus years of use. I look up here at twelve for holiday pay, and twelve down here is HRA expense. So in three-thousand lines, I spent hours going through and defining standardized expense objects for every line item. What is it and what object should it be? And if I needed more than one, I added sub-object values. I provided to the financial task force a spreadsheet of the swap chart of accounts and then an example of reports with the accounts swapped. But then asked the question, "Do you even wanna simplify that?" But then asked the question, do you even want to simplify that? So that's the rundown of everything I've been doing for the last couple of weeks.
Any final questions or comments for Chip? Okay, hearing none. Chip, thank you very much for all of your work and especially for the thorough report tonight, which I'm really glad for. And so we'll move on and talk about the implications of that report in the next item on the agenda.
Do I have permission to provide these same reports to Ellen, P S P?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will do that.
That'd be great. Thanks. And you and I'll talk tomorrow so we can figure out what else to do.
The next three days, we're on the agenda again.
Every day, you got it. Thank you, Chip.
All right. Bye, everyone.
Okay. Good night. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, the mayor's update on the '27 budget process. This is a memo that Ike drafted for the council. It was in the packet so the folks in the community could see it. I just want to review it very quickly. Tomorrow, the plan is that Chip and Kerry and I will meet with the rest of the department heads to actually look at the new chart of accounts and what he just called the swap sheets and begin to raise any questions that they may have. On Wednesday, the task force will be meeting with Carter and Laurie, and I'm not sure who else is in the room from that group tonight, and they will be reviewing the proposed chart of accounts. So we'll have those two sets of eyes on it in the next 48 hours. On Thursday, Kerry has scheduled every one of the department heads to meet with Chip and myself and Kerry individually during the day on Thursday. And the goal will be to actually work through any questions that the department heads have about how to use the new chart of accounts in budgeting for next fiscal year, fiscal year '26, '27. On Monday, the 27th, council members, we're going to want to come back to this at the end of the night and take action as we close tonight. We're going to request that we hold a special council meeting. And there will be a number of items on that agenda, including approving new water and sewer rates that are going to be proposed, we hope, by the water and sewer task force to hear, possibly to hear the audit report, to act on the proposed chart of accounts. There are actually some other things on that agenda as well. It's going to be a fairly full meeting. On Monday, the 3rd, the goal is to meet and to try and do the final execution on the sewer and general fund loans that Chip referred to tonight. And so that's what he was saying, tonight he'll send some more information to Ellen and the folks at Pesamsek Bank. And we've tried to spread that out a little bit so that we're not in a last-minute panic trying to get all the paperwork done on those last two big loans. But you can hear in Chip's report tonight that our goal is to try and borrow significantly less than we got approval to do from the voters. So right now, the number that Chip is messing with is $875,000 on the loan for the sewer fund instead of a million. And if we can pull off the cash flow, that's what we really have to look at, our goal is only take 1.3 million of the 1.8 million that the voters gave us approval for. So it would be, what, $600,000 plus less than the roughly $2.8 million we were given approval for. So stay tuned. That number may change, but that's where we're trying to go. So we'll make those final decisions and execute those documents on November 3rd. Remember that whatever we borrow on the general fund note is obligated to be used immediately to pay down the principal on our line of credit for the year. So Chip showed us we borrowed 1.8 million year-to-date on that $2.825 million that we got permission to borrow back in June. So that, whatever we end up borrowing on the general fund note will go directly to pay down principal. And then the other money will come directly into the general fund to help us with cash flow for the rest of the year. Then on Monday, November 10th, our goal is to have a first draft of the budget from the department heads that would be sent to you all. That's not a meeting night, please note. That's not a proposed meeting night. It's just saying that a week in advance, we hope to provide council members with the first draft of a budget that the department heads have been working on for several weeks by then. Then on Monday, November 17th, we would have our regular council meeting. And the likelihood is that we'll divide this into two parts and have several of the council, several of the department heads come and answer any questions that council has about that budget. Following Monday night, no, sorry, December 1st, the following regular council meeting would be the second half, reviewing the second half of that proposed budget. And basically, the goal is by December 15th, that the council would feel like you have enough information to move the process forward. I don't really want to say approve of a budget, but it would be your decision at that point, is this the draft that we are prepared to share with the community? So that on January 10th, we've already authorized a special town meeting day for information purposes, and that would be a major part of the conversation. For the community, have a chance to give input, ask questions about the budget, and for the department heads all to be present, and as well as council members during that day, to hear any concerns that folks in the community have. The following week, the week of Monday, the 12th of January, final budget adjustments would be made by department heads. A final draft of the budget would be sent to the you all on council no later than January 20th. That's the day after the MLK holiday weekend. And then council would have the opportunity to approve the draft of the budget that would be going to the voters on March 3rd for their approval. And we have to have, that date is kind of sacred. We've got to get to that draft that council approves by then in order to appropriately warn that information for the public meeting in March. So I wanted to make sure you all understood, this is, it's both aggressive and pretty remarkable in its level of review and kind of constant conversation with the department heads. Do you have any questions? Carter, do you want to add anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, first we have to clarify a couple of dates. So KBS is going to present and do the audit walkthrough on next week's task force, so on Wednesday, October 29th. And that was because they had some vacation conflicts, I think. So not that we're not going to look at it, but if, for the, just a public heads up, please come and attend to that, but that will be on, yeah, the 29th, excuse me. And so that means that, again, we can talk about it at the special council meeting next Monday, but we won't really have, they'll present on the 3rd, is what they have scheduled for.
Thank you. I wondered if I'd made a mistake on that, Carter. So I think we've asked KBS to be present on the 3rd then and not on the 27th.
Correct.
Okay, that was a mistake in my 4:00 AM effort to write this all down.
Yeah, but besides, I think it should all flow and follow, you know. Then I could correct everything.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Any other comments or questions about this? Community residents, anybody want to ask any questions about the process? Okay, then that item is done. We can move on to the next item on the agenda. Resolution for a municipal planning grant. And Frank Cheney is in the room to speak with us about what's going on with this one. Just stand up and yell it out there, Frank.
You've got a copy of the formal resolution. This is on the municipal planning grant for the feasibility study of the thermal energy network that Carter had talked to you at the last meeting. This resolution, what it does, it has to go in with the application that we're getting ready to send in. Okay? What it basically says is that if we get the grant, that you as a council agree to all the responsibilities within the grant and that you're going to match appropriately to the terms of the grant. It also assigns Rick as the authorizing public official, Kevin as the alternate authorizing public official, and myself as the grant manager. We're asking for the full $30,000, so our portion would be approximate, which should be 10% or $3,000. And if you can sign this tonight, I would appreciate it very much because we are trying to get this application in, and it is part of the prerequisite.
Well, just to remind you, this is for what we talked about a couple of weeks ago. The goal here is a municipal planning grant award that would allow us to do an initial study on thermal networking, geothermal, methane gas capture kinds of alternatives for long-range planning for energy for the city of Newport. Any questions, council members, about what we're being asked to sign tonight? Community residents, any questions, ideas, concerns you want to lift up?
Does the grant cover the entire cost of the study?
We don't know yet, but the goal is to come in at 30,000. You know, the likelihood is we'll contract for as much as we can get for 30 grand. That's what, we don't have a good answer, but we've been told by other cities that we're probably in the ballpark.
Is it 30 or 35?
30.
30.
And we're not asking for that commitment to be signed, just the resolution.
All we're going to sign is the resolution tonight because it's a step too early in the process.
Yeah.
And this proposal is due on November 3rd, Frank, is that right?
3rd.
Yeah. So Frank and Kerry have been working on trying to pull this proposal together, and our goal is to get it all complete in time to get it in by the deadline. Do I have a motion to approve signing the municipal resolution for municipal planning grant as presented by Frank?
Sir, move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any further conversation, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Can I use this version?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to sign it and pass it down.
Yeah, two seconds.
And we're going to hand it over to Kerry, okay? Okay. The next item on the agenda is an item that I put on here without any backup material at this point. You'll remember that a couple of months ago now, we agreed that council was going to try and take responsibility for reviewing any final questions and details on the personnel policy. And then we were going to try and come back for a final conversation about that and make some decisions. And I think it's been one thing among many, many things that the council is juggling. Yeah, come ahead, Frank. Come grab it.
You guys can have it, I didn't know if you wanted me to.
Yeah. And just, Frank, you'll make sure that after you get your copy, you'll hand it to Jim or Kerry or somebody.
I have to have it signed tomorrow night at the planning commission.
Fair enough, okay. So here's my concern. We've been juggling a lot. We're doing a huge amount, and we're doing it all on a very tight timeline. And there are questions that have been raised now for close to a year and a half about the personnel policy that was passed in the spring of 2024. And some of those questions are clearly having an impact on our department heads and their ability to, they have concerns about whether or not some of what was passed in that document is going to make it hard for them to retain employees or attract employees over time. So I'm concerned that we need a firm deadline, a way that we're going to finish this document and come back and make some final decisions on it. I'm prepared to give it some time. In other words, I can put some time into this. And my goal would be to maybe do a little bit of work on it, come back and report at the special council meeting next week what we intend to do and any final questions we have, and then take action to improve upon the current personnel policy in any way we may want to do no later than November 3rd. Because I think this is in fact, it's been an urgent matter for a long time, and it's becoming critically urgent in my judgment. So Kevin, I'm thinking that maybe you and I, since you're the one who had said you would kind of take this on, maybe you and I could try and sit down this week sometime and go through and name what the questions are. I know we've got a question about how overtime pay is calculated for non-union employees. That's a big one. I know we've got a question, I think there's a question in there about how vacation time may be accrued as well, but I'm not sure of that. And there's another major thing. Do you remember what it was, Kevin?
Grievance policy.
The grievance policy, thank you, that's what it was. So at the very least, we need to look at it and come back with some suggestions about the improvements on those items. We've had all kinds of input. Back in August, you'll remember, we had a chance for people in the community to lift up their concerns, so we'll want to go back and review the notes that we took. I have some notes from those meetings. So I'm just really asking if the council is okay with our trying to accelerate this and get it done in the next two weeks.
And plus, there's that whole process that a group of them had met with the city manager to make changes and such, that was completely swept aside, so I've got...
Now, two years ago.
Yeah, I've got some of that documentation. I just compare the policies and see where they're at.
Does that sound okay? Council members, Carter, any questions or concerns about what I'm trying to lay out here? Andrew?
No, I have some feedback from some of the hourly employees as well that I will share.
Kevin, what's your life like on Friday afternoon? Could you meet with me for an hour or so after work on Friday, like mid-afternoon?
This Friday, I believe so.
So council members, if you have anything you want to make sure that Kevin and I look at, you would need to get it to us before then. Okay? Members of the community, go ahead, Jennifer.
Couple other items were that the new personnel policy shifted the employees from termination for cause to fire at will. And with the removal of their grievance procedures, that basically just leaves them out there at the whim of whoever has political control. And the other one was in reference to the disparity between the pay structure under the union contract versus the non-union contract. And I think Tom could speak to this better than I, but my understanding is it's causing different people that hold the same position to basically be paid different amounts of Is that fairly accurate? Like your foreman, that's non-union, your foreman, that's union, are they getting different amounts because of this? In terms of the overtime stuff?
Well, the non-union aren't getting overtime, so yeah.
Yeah.
It's part of that overtime question.
Right.
I'd say that's, from my perspective, the primary issue that's presented.
Correct, but you have to keep in mind that you've got union employees that are getting a pay structure. It's not just that these guys aren't, you know, you have to compare the two, if it contrasts the two, because you've got union people that have a different pay structure. That was, I think, historically the same pay structure for the non-union until it got ripped out from underneath them.
Go ahead, Jennifer Hawkins.
Just one point, which I only thought of while I was listening to, is considering how long this has been and how long some of these things take, or you have a botched job done. Has anybody thought of, I would say, just re-adopting the old policy and working on a new one? I mean, the old policy seemed, I think it's something to ask the employees, the old policy seemed to be all right with them overall and maybe unlawful.
Yeah, I want to be careful. I guess I just want to take that opportunity to note. I think it's important to hear from our employees about what their experience of this policy is. I do not think it is, it is not the job or the appropriate responsibility of the employees to dictate what the policy should be. That's a job that is in the hands of the council.
I don't think I'm saying dictate.
No, but I'm not, I'm just saying, I want to be very sensitive because I think actually we're walking a very fine line here. In my judgment, employees should have a huge amount of input about what's taking place. At the end of the day, it is not the employee's job to determine what the policy should look like. It's the job of the council to take responsibility for that, even when sometimes, and I've had to do this in other jobs in other places, it's not very popular with employees. So I just want to be careful and clear with council that part of the challenge of what we're dealing with now with a process that hasn't been dragged out for two, four years is that everybody's got an opinion, and the people who have been most challenged by those decisions obviously are the employees from whom we do need to hear. So Kevin, I will see if I can get John Klisch to join us on Friday. I don't know if he's available or not, but I'll try from SP&amp;F because he's the one at this point who I think has certainly the most experience around the personnel policy management. They've asked him to help us with the final version. And I think, having said all of that, Jennifer, I do want to say, Jennifer Hopkins, that I think looking at kind of how... Jennifer Hopkins, that I think, looking at kind of how they stand with the old policy, I'm not quite sure what I think the best move is, but it's certainly on the table.
I think, you know, it should be. It might, at least temporarily stop that and solve the problem.
If we can't long-term stop, solve the problem, that would certainly be an option. I'm certainly hopeful that we can just put this to bed for a while.
Yeah.
Kevin, you were gonna say something, I'm sorry.
Any idea what time on Friday, or you could just sue me?
I have the afternoon wide open. What's your afternoon like?
Oh, after work, or at least be there and pretend to work.
I'm gonna pretend you didn't just say that, I'm still.
It is Friday afternoon. I, I, I could, anytime after two o'clock.
Okay, I will see if John can make any of those times work. Okay, council members, any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Tom.
I'm not sure if I've said, but, and I know you, Rick, I spoke to you about it, that if this seems like we go through motions, and I'm hoping this isn't the case, but it drags on you further, that at least look at the, you could do an amendment to the current one and, and give those guys their overtime back. That, to me, is huge.
I, I think all of us on council have heard that concern loud and clear. And it's certainly my intention that we're gonna make some decision in the next two weeks to deal with the most challenging aspects of, of the current policy. Okay, anything else on that one? Great, then we're up to task force reports. Uh, let's see, John, you wanna go first?
Sure, um, Water and Sewer is working on the calculations, or more specifically, a couple of members of the Water and Sewer Committee are putting in the hard work, Jennifer and, uh, uh, Paul Patrick Crowley's involved, and Paul Tyce is involved in, in the serious math of looking at what adjustments need to be made on both water and sewer. Um, we're meeting Wednesday night, hopefully to finalize a report for the special meeting Monday night. The other issue that we were asked to look at, um, among others, um, Jim's employees raised it in the city clerk's office, and that is how should users who transitioned from metered to un-metered during a quarter be billed during that quarter when part of it's metered, part of it's un-metered? And almost, some methods sound likely to be very equitable, but would impose an almost insurmountable time burden on the city clerk's office. At any rate, after the folks on the committee discussed the matter, it's some length, the recommendation, um, that we're bringing tonight and that I believe, um, we're asking for a vote on, is that, and I'll use myself as an example, I've got a meter in the current quarter. Basically, when the next bill comes out, instead of trying to split it between my metered part and my un-metered part, I'll simply be billed on an un-metered basis for the current quarter. My meter's going to be read, just like everybody else's meter, and that reading will set my starting point for the first full quarter in which I'm metered. And going forward for the full quarter, I'll be metered. In other words, there won't be any effort to prorate quarters between metered and un-metered.
There's a little glitch in that. Um, Stacy's been on vacation, and we don't know because it's gotta be entered into Nemrick, it's gotta be pushed to Neptune. Neptune knows to read, otherwise they don't know to read. So I would say, theory, it's great, but I think if we can postpone the vote on this until Monday night because Stacy is on vacation.
Is she gonna be back before?
Yeah, she's back on Wednesday.
Well, maybe tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I wasn't aware of that.
Uh, no, it, it dawned on me because I was thinking, how, how do they know, how do they get that beginning meter reading in if you're, you're midstream? And whether it kicks into billing before or after? But one entry forces into the other entry.
Yeah, because the other, the other question was that if, was that Nemrick didn't seem to be set up to be able to prorate in any reasonable manner.
It can't, it can't prorate. But the question is, what we get is a starting, when, when, when the meter starts? Because if it can't be read, if, if when it's read, it generates a bill, you're gonna have to backhaul that bill, then you'll have the right started. If not, it's gonna go from zero, so you're gonna use it, you, you effectively could be double billed. And unless we clarify that, I think that this, this city has a lot that they're.
I had been given the general impression from Stacy that doing it along the lines I described would be, from a management perspective, the most feasible way of doing it without creating massive amounts of labor, but I do think it's worth the check.
Okay, so we won't take action tonight on that?
But that, but that's subject to confirming that our understanding.
In theory, that's the best way of going.
So that will be a part of whatever Water and Sewer, or, yeah, comes back with a recommendation on next week?
Right, so, so yeah, subject to confirming that our understanding of the actual logistics are, are correct, that, that would be how we do it.
Okay.
We, we think it should either be one or the other.
We, I, I'm hearing that, I, I think it makes sense.
You start mixing thing and try to take half of this and the quarter of that, two-thirds of this, and three of that, ten percent of that.
Right, it's crazy.
Well, apparently Chip and.
Not set up for that.
Yeah, apparently Chip and Stacy had a conversation about what Nemrick can and can't do in that regard, and he said that trying to do prorations would just be administratively completely impractical.
Okay.
At best.
All right.
System doesn't do that as far as we know.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll discuss it again next week and make a decision.
Chip and they had some big secrets holding, but as we know, it's not.
No, in fact, I think he's told me there is no big secret, so.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so.
Anything else from Water and Sewer then, John?
No, that's, that's it at this point.
I'll just note, Water and Sewer and finance teams have been meeting weekly again the last month and a half or so because of all the pressure on the various things we're working on. And I'm really grateful to everybody for all the work that you're doing on this.
Yeah, oh, I'm just going to mention one other thing that I was reminded of here. And that is that the other topic we talked about, uh, that is going to come into play during budget season is a suggestion that there should be some funds in the budget for, to begin leak detection studies.
Yep. Leak detection studies. Okay. You're not gonna believe this, but I woke up this morning thinking, I wonder if they make such a thing as a device that could sit on a toilet and like go off if the toilet keeps on running? Like an audible device?
It's old ear.
No, I mean, that actually most of us would hear and pay attention to. Because I was thinking about how much money runs on a toilet like that.
And a little fire.
Leak detection works for me. All right, that's it, John, from you tonight?
That's it.
Carter?
Good evening. So, uh, this week caveat to, we're complimenting the transfers we actually did not need last week, but that does not mean not good work was done with Carrie and Chip and Rick looking at charted accounts as we already previously talked about. Still working on making and crafting the perfect credit card policy as well as the appropriations policy, so I hope to have that, um, fine-tuned for our special meeting next week. Um, yeah, again, with that meeting, there wasn't too much, but again, things are still churning, um, on the city front, so. Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't know if there's any auxiliary things you're thinking about, Rick, but we spent some time already this evening, so I'm willing to pass the mic.
Okay.
Yeah.
The audit is the really big deal, so just to reiterate.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
The plan will be for the, for KBS to meet a week from Wednesday with the task force, and then the following Monday, which is the third of November, we're expecting to have KBS join us to give a report to the council.
Yeah, Carrie, thanks.
Thank you, Carter. Kevin, anything you wanna say about the task force on housing and security, et cetera?
The main group, the task force on housing, is the thrust was to get the ordinance, and now the subgroup is going forward with the second part of the, the mission. And that's something where the city really isn't gonna be spearheading it. As you heard from the Joshua House, you know, they're gonna kinda take the ball and run. Although, I think we should still be a part of it and just know what's going on.
So it might be interesting, Kevin, for us to try and gather that group in the next couple or three weeks and just say, how do you all feel? Because there were twelve or thirteen people sitting around that table.
Right.
And kind of get them, get them together again and say, where are we in the process? Should this group continue, or should it be stood down? What do we wanna do next?
It should come up with a meeting.
Okay, let's talk about that. I hadn't, I hadn't thought about trying to do that anytime soon, so. Okay, Andrew, anything from the fire department strategic planning group?
Uh, we, we have not met yet, but I would like to, to say thank you to Justin LaForce, who is not only a member, but he is doing a lot of the work in the background with the reporting. Um, we should have a bunch of reporting done soon, um, as far as that goes. With, with the fire department, we've had five different events happening in the last three weeks, uh, from the, from the truck. We had the truck arrive, we put that in service, we did a ceremony for that. Um, we had our open house. Uh, they had over two hundred and fifty people attend. Um, in the, uh, fire class, fire one and two class was there to do live demonstrations of some of their training that they were doing during the open house, and that was very well received from anyone that attended, so. Uh, we've been very busy, although we have not come back with any numbers yet. Again, I just wanna say thank you, a shout out to Justin LaForce for all the work that he's been doing and continues to do specifically. And, uh, when he gets those numbers back to us, we're gonna schedule another meeting, which, um, may happen in November, um, but it will be in the middle of November because of the holidays coming. Uh, there's a lot of people that are gonna be out of town on vacations and that sort of thing, so I will keep you on the post.
Thank you. Has the new truck been out on a call?
No, not, not to my knowledge.
Okay. It's kinda crazy, we spend that kinda money and then we hope it'll sit in the firehouse and not move, right?
Yeah, we had, uh, we, we have it all now. I mean, it's, it's ready to go, so.
It's crazy. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Can somebody take a look at our sheet there and see what we've got? Pam?
Apparently on Friday, there was a water main break at the east side. So somebody at Wendy's hung a thing on their door that said there was a boil water order. It didn't have the city logo, it didn't have a signature, it didn't have any other information, but it did look like the usual ones. There was nothing on our website, and there was nobody to ask. So of course, there were loads of questions. There needs to be some way of people being able to get that kind of information. I tried tagging you, but you apparently don't get tagged.
Yeah, I'm not watching social media, that's for sure.
I don't blame you, but there was nobody else to tag, and that was a little bizarre.
Well, I'll just say, at this point, I'm assuming that if it's, if it's, people know how to reach me, and I, and I didn't even know about it, so. If, and certainly we can find out, Tom's left for the evening, but, so I still don't know anything about it, actually. But the point is well taken, that if we have a water main break, it would be wise for us to get something on the website, and it's not hard for us to do.
Right.
That's something we're saying, huh, Carrie, used to be hard to do, so. So thank you, Pam, I love it.
It's, it's also possible that it was after the curb stops were the east side, and it was east side's water main break, and I was losing responsibility.
I don't know what it was.
So I'm just saying, we can't rule that out.
No, we'll watch. We'll watch. Anyway, what's the next, next person on the list?
It's, that was it.
That's it? Okay, new business, Andrew?
No, thank you.
John? Uh, Kevin, who are you, Kevin? You're not Carter, appreciate it. Carter, anything you wanna add? Oh, we lost him, I guess not. Jim, any new business?
No.
I have one item that Carrie reminded me about. Um, I just wanna say to all of you council members and to folks in the community, Liam Abate, I think that's how you pronounce his last name, who came and presented to us about the tier one A, two B, all that kinda stuff, mapping that he's doing, um, sent us a note on the fourteenth of October saying, uh, he sent it to all people in NEK towns. You're receiving this email because you've been involved in NVDA's Act 181 outreach. In our outreach, we've received hundreds of questions about tier three lands, in part due to feedback from the regional planning commissions such as NVDA. The land use review board will be having four public engagement sessions, including one on the twenty-eighth of October in Newport, which I will be attending. Uh, so that session will be in Newport at the Gateway Center on the twenty-eighth. I don't see a time.
Six thirty.
Thank you, Pam, at six thirty PM, if anybody would like to go. I know this doesn't like make everybody's pulse race, but in fact, it's really important that we get these maps right because they're gonna make a big, they're gonna have a big say in how public money is become available, where we can do development and how to do it over the next decade or more.
I think quite a lot of us are going.
Good, so just wanted to make sure y'all knew about that. Carrie, thanks for reminding me. Uh, old business, Andrew?
No, thank you.
John? Kevin? Jim?